Let's start with the, um...
Okay.
Let's start with the new one. Won't hurt.
The numbers are wrong, by the way.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think we can figure it out.
If you don't have it up, I guess we just...
All right, let me see if I'm hoping I'll...
There you go.
I ain't helping, dude.
We're all still waiting for a couple more on that.
Okay.
She's getting eaten for that.
Eat. We're good, we're good, Gary.
No, it's all right.
You all right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna trust you.
What'd you say, it's already been through art, right?
(laughing). Develop one of the website, right?
You, once this presented next week, we all prove it. It will go straight to websites. And straight to the other public accounts.
So down at the very bottom of that page, that's what we were talking about.
That's your airport money.
That's my airport money.
That's part, a good portion of it, yeah.
Okay.
That's true. Oh, we borrowed from the fund balance.
So is that grant for that FA thing guaranteed? I mean, is that like a done deal?
Well, it's, it's, all, all I know is subject to federal funding. Congressional approval. I've never known.
Do they actually think Congress has approved the budget? They just keep continuing resolutions, don't they?
We've, we've never had a problem in getting reimbursement. I mean, it might be delayed for a few months, but yeah. We'd say it'd delay maybe a year or two to the next budget, but we got it. Yeah, yeah. At the end of the day.
Lord, what have not you, have you not done?
Pardon me?
What have you not done?
Oh, in my life? Oh, I know. I did that at college, only for, I interned short lived.
That two weeks ago she got fed up with it.
It wasn't for me when I had to go in with weights.
Glad you could join, Lauren.
Oh, no, I was kidding.
Carry on.
Yeah, come on, Andre, you invited to the party.
Right. Where's my colors?
I have a...
Why did you know that?
Can you tell them to come over? My cut is not here tonight. (laughing).
Mr. Carter, have the roll over arms?
We hope not.
I thought, you know, I talked to him about five o'clock and I thought he was gonna be...
It was like 6:30, I got a text and I...
He got a better offer.
He might.
Yeah, probably.
Maybe you got, you got our, our press lady through six, stay away.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate all the work that y'all did on that today.
Oh, no, no problem. I'm just, you know, just trying to get that stuff out.
I was hoping Jody would be here because her...
She's sick. She went home sick. Now, I think it's more stomach related than anything.
Well, her, her M Coee memo was phenomenal.
And we've been pulling that stuff together for last week and trying to, but yeah, she did a great job.
Good job to everybody in...
And I did share the elaborate photos.
I did too.
Did you? Okay. I sent it to Harold and I said, you don't have it?
Well, I sent it to I would need.
Okay, sorry.
Just saying, this meeting was the best and to have so much information on what we're gonna be dealing with next week, before, or the next meeting, before we get to it.
I would say staff loves the ability to do that. You know, we have that ability and it worked out, like Bob got the airport staff working. Cause one thing we hate is having to drop something on the dais and say, I need y'all to vote. It's not fair to you guys and we don't like to do it. It just, it's like that grant. They give you the letter, you know, a week ago and say, hey, deadlines coming up.
Or, or push it back a year. We don't want that.
Only thing you didn't say was that we just got that $150,000. Didn't we just get money?
We did on, from the Department of Baby, the, the fire station.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We don't have to reimburse that money. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we saw that. That memo came this week from Brandy.
And that was back to what I was talking about in there, not to keep beating on it, but the 20-year lifespan of some of those grants, the 20-year grant that went to purchase that right of way of those properties for the airport relocation, airport road relocation, it expired. So we no longer, if we use it for something beyond aviation uses, we don't have to reimburse the state for it, so.
That's time and work out.
Time and work out, right?
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Like to call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda tonight is the Shenandoah area, the aging, they're not here. They basically, we told them, we had pushed it out twice on them, so they're gonna push it out on us. So next meeting, they'll be, they'll be here for us.
So, Mr. Chairman, right before I jump into the fund balance analysis, and so, you know, a lot of this stuff is, is, you know, and we supplement it this year, we're trying to do some additional stuff, provide Jolson documentation, especially since we've got three board members who have not been through the budget process. And I encourage you anytime, Doug, I don't under, you know, Andre, I don't understand this, we'll just sit down and go through it. We're available, we'll make ourselves available to do that. We are, so the good news tomorrow, the schools, I talked to Melody today, in a little bit, we're gonna talk about the budget. Andre's been working, and Andre's...
Now, Andre, I don't, I don't know Andre at all.
So Andre's our former finance director. He's, he's back working part-time. He works for Prince William County and here and there. He double-dip it. But I'm glad, so glad to have him back. Jim Almendinger's out, his wife, they're out of state right now. And so I've got a combination of Andre and Carolyn working. Carolyn happens to be out of state with her family this week, so I've got Andre to fill in. So it's finance director by committee, but Andre, how long have you been with the county, either deputy or finance director?
Just over five years.
Yeah, so, you know, at least we got some experience and help us through this situation, so. But thank you, Andre, for being here. Andre's been working, so one of the things, these, these new sheets, and we'll get to that in a minute. Y'all adopted new health insurance rates that were 2% lower. Those are now incorporated into the budgets. We've been able to pull in that savings. We've addressed, you know, we've refinanced those school bonds this year. That money's been taken out. So we've been able to make, Andre's been working to make all those updates to the budget sheets. Tomorrow, I've been told by Melody, by noon, they're supposed to get from the state what they anticipate to be the school revenue from the state. They're gonna present their budget tomorrow night to the school board and will get us a copy of their request before or after the meeting, certainly by Wednesday or so. By the 12th, the state's supposed to, I got it today, supposed to vote on their budget, which includes constitutional officer salaries. So we anticipate some additional monies for Sheriff's Department, commission revenue, treasurer, all the, we haven't, we've left all those revenue numbers flat so far. We'll know what those numbers will be over the next few weeks. We won't get it at the end of this week, but we'll be getting it. But the big piece is the school piece, so. Between now and our next scheduled work session, next Tuesday, 9:00 AM, a lot of, our picture will be coming clearer. We'll be able to put what we think is, you know...
True budget.
True final budget and be able to hand it to you and say, look, we've got everything in, here's some cuts, and then y'all can go through and give us some direction on what else you wanna do.
Will, will we be also able to talk about individual departments?
Absolutely, yes.
Like, like school board?
Yes.
I mean, school board's a big question for everybody and I think that we're gonna have questions from everybody in this room.
I can, I can have Melody here to answer specific school questions, cause obviously I don't know, if you ask me what's going on at Reston and why, I could have Melody here for that. I can have her up there. You know, and I heard and I appreciate the comment about you can cut $2 million out of the schools and not hurt anything. I'll also say, I know, we fund the least operationally of any of our six other neighbors.
Yeah, but that, okay, I, I understand what you're...
Operational, not capital.
I understand what you're saying. But when, when we saw the numbers, you hit on one of the points that I wanted to make. When we were judged against our six other neighbors, we weren't judged with our, we were third from the bottom. Okay, if we take the neighbors that are directly around us, we're third from the top. So I, I don't know what the true numbers are.
I think that's, I think that's the number, I came in with capital, capital back into it. I, I can provide that stuff again for next week. And I'll have Melody here for you guys to ask specific questions and she can...
Well, I mean, all I wanna do is to have apples to apples, because the numbers that she quoted was not really the numbers that we should be looking at. Cause I can't compare to Loudon and I can't compare...
No, all, all, and all we, we really try to do is look at our neighbors. Look at Shenandoah Page.
Right.
Frederick, Clark, look at the people we fight head-to-head with for employee talent. That's, that's, don't look at Prince William, don't look, we, we do look at Falk here. Falk here's gonna be the high, Page's gonna be on the low, but they'll balance themselves out, so we can provide that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
So fund balance, so, fund balance is, in essence, cash reserves of the county. This is not, it's unrestricted, it's basically free for the board to, to spend. It's not allocated for any one specific project. It's uncommitted. So what we're showing here, this is what Andre's pulled, this is based on the new audit that you're gonna get in the packet and will have for considered, be presented next week by Robinson, Farmer and Cox. Our generic fund balance, 12,214,561. That's the number that they'll show for the end of FY19, so June 30, 19. In our current budget, we use 2 million of fund balance for capital projects, was about 800,000 and 1.2 million with school operating. Historically, the schools will ask for their surplus back. The last two years, we told them we'd done the budget. We're using 1.2 million of fund balance to make your budget work. You're not gonna get, the board's not gonna give you everything you want back and there's no guarantee they get half back. Usually when they get that money back from you, they're gonna purchase textbooks or buses or something capital. Not only, not salaries, cause salaries would have to be needed for the following year. So they would look at trying to do some one-time things. So if, you know, of course, we know we've got the 2 million, if you give them back half of it, cause they had 1.6 million dollar savings at the end of the day, which is good. The reason why we give it back is we encourage them not to spend every dime, cause year, many years ago, there was always the, you hear like, well, they spent everything right up to the end of the budget year. They were telling people to spend it, cause if you don't spend it, you'll lose it. We're encouraging them not to spend it and to save it, so they can make some of those capital repairs or buy some buses or buy textbooks or computers, whatever they need to do.
Now, if I remember you right, one of the things that we did last year was give them some of their funds back to get their air conditioning at Reston Jeffords, correct?
They use, I think, some of that. We, we also had, in the fall, we had been putting, we had some capital money inside that and the board appropriated. That's what's funding part of the AS Roads project now that they're under construction, we're getting ready to go under construction for. So the basic stuff for Road, they may use some of this money for finish Road. They've got a couple of things left on the AS Roads that we didn't give them all the money on. They may ask to use 200 or 300,000 dollars to replace, I don't know, windows or something that wasn't part of the budget. They'll have to make that request to you and you would have to approve it separately. Just for finance purposes, I plugged it in this model to look at it. So when I say projected fund balance, if we had 2.2 million for last year, I'm projecting that possibly we'll have 9.4 for this year. What it doesn't account for is, let's just, there's quite the possibility that you come in under budget or over revenue and we've had years, there's 2 or 3 million dollars of additional cash available that we didn't spend. So that, the odds are that 9.4 will be up. The unknown for the last two years is, of course, we've been paying legal bills for the EDA. We had paid, this previous year, we had paid Cherry Becker 400 and some thousand dollars for the audit. So there's a reason why this number is 12,2 and probably not 13 and a half or 14 million. Part of that has been, we've had some additional cost. We had savings at the same time to RSWJ, a lot of that we were able to cover by shifting funds. But that's money that normally would've flowed back to fund balance at the end of the day. So our fiscal policies say that 15% of our total operating budget should be available. Now, based on a current year budget of 112 million, 15% would be about 16.8 million. And we've got about 8.36% at 9.4. Again, I think that number will be higher than 9.4 million. The other thing is, we have some money in special projects that if the board needed it, we could not spend it. There's that 4.1 million I've mentioned that's sitting over there, that was for the twice-year billing. We, we're closer to that 15% than this shows. This is our true fund balance.
Is it a requirement of the state that we have 15%?
No, that, this is, this is, this is for the credit rating agencies, this, and this is, the county self-imposed finance policies is, you know, we're gonna, there's a copy of that in the audit. We're going to pay for small stuff with cash. We're going to not borrow too much money. There's some ratios there of total assessed value to how much our debt service is.
Just like here in town, just like if you're a private individual, yeah.
That's right.
Debt to income.
So what happens every time we do an audit, this credit rating agencies look at that and see, how's the county looking compared to its financials?
And that's, then the bond rating is affected by this as well?
Yes.
The A, double A?
Double A or...
And we're what now? A plus?
We're double A.
Double A.
Plus or dub, A2, there's three rating agencies. You have Moody's, SMP and Fitch. So we're rated by all three agencies, but we're all basically a, a double A. We're a notch off triple A, which for a community our size is pretty good. And part of that is having cash on hand. And I can tell you during the Great Recession, the county had cash on hand and when things got tough, we slashed budgets, but we were able to weather the storm. Now, Archie knows, Archie was here. We were able to weather the storm without sinking too far, right, Archie?
Okay, no doubt.
We have some loans down here out of fund balance. The skate park, there's a proffer if, if the crooked run ever develops commercially, which is zone four, they have to pay a proffer of 100,000 for the skate park, which we advanced to build the skate park, what, 10 years ago now? And then we purchased properties for the airport, which, oh, in theory, we get back in a couple of years, once we go through the environmental assessment and, and then eventually get reimbursement.
Didn't they also proffer softball fields and...
They did some other stuff, but with the cat, the cash payment here.
The cash payment is what we're, okay.
Yes, what we loaned out of the fund balance.
Okay.
Any questions there? And when we get the audit, I can show on the page, there's one specific page, it talks about fund balance, change from one year to the next, right, Andre? Good? Like I said, anytime you get a question later, we can go through it.
Did you wanna say something?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you were gonna comment.
You looked like you were gonna talk.
You looked like you were gonna comment.
No, no.
I was waiting to.
No, no.
Doug, you gonna talk about the revenue category explanation?
Yes, sir. In your packet, and there's a couple of things on here that need to be updated and Emily's been working on it, but we just haven't had it done. Like the tax rate, we're 65 and a half, not the 595. That was the, the rate when we, reassessment last year dropped back. And on the very, very last page, it talks about sanitary district fees, 350 plus 4.3%. It's now 350 plus 5%, so I just wanted to point this out.
Can you give me those again, please?
Uh, the top, real, real property, .655. And on the very last page, sanitary district fees is 350 dollars plus 5%. It's the charge that we charge back for collection. I think, and we'll, we're gonna double-check everything else, maybe the septicage fees are off, but what this really is, is trying to, this show you either in the budget or statutorily, cause some of these things are set by the code, like penalties, like the tax code, like if you don't, if you don't pay your taxes by June 5 or December 5, you get hit automatically with a 10% penalty and it starts accruing at a interest rate of 10%. So if you go one year without paying those taxes, in theory, you've had a 10% penalty and you paid a full 10%, it's 20% higher than what your recent tax bill was. And that's set by the code. But all the other, this is here to give you just explanations of the fees, what the amounts were, the business licenses are all, you know, they're all different amounts based on if you're a contractor or if you're in the real estate profession and all those types of things. Code sets the limitations on business licenses. We're typically not the highest or the lowest, we're somewhere in the middle. If you ever wanna know, Doug, what are the limitation, I get that from Sherri pretty quick. Pull that for you.
Under mobile homes is 5.95?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, it should be 6 and a, no, it should be .655. It's the same as the real estate. Thank you for catching up.
And the occupancy tax and the meals tax? Now, that's where our, isn't that where our tax tourism dollars comes from?
See, there's no change, you got it. So we're, 2% goes to fund balance, goes to general fund dollars. That's money you can spend on anything.
In the meals tax, right?
Uh, the meals tax, 4% is dedicated solely to school capital improvements.
School capital.
School capital improvements. There is an additional 3% occupancy tax that goes towards tourism. That was added two years ago. That's a good catch, too.
So it's 5%?
It's 5%.
Okay.
Correct that one. And we'll get you an updated sheet.
What is 5%?
The occupancy tax is 5, cause the additional 3% actually goes back to tourism?
Has to go to tourism. But everything like dog license fees and transfer fees, like zoning and subdivision, those vary for rezoning or conditions, permits 500 bucks, flat fee. We'll get you an updated sheet, but these are just, you know, there are certain fees, like the law library fee, there's $4 for each civil case that's filed. Courthouse maintenance, there's $2 tacked on to every civil, civil criminal or traffic case. The problem is sometimes judges weigh for fees, you know? So you say, it says that, that doesn't necessarily mean you collect on everything. Plus you have folks that go in without paying unpaid fees. Now, some of those folks end up at RSW, end up on work release and they, guess what? When you're on work release, some of your money goes to pay your court fees.
Right.
So sometimes you do get some of that stuff back.
How about your weapons permit fees? Isn't that $50?
I thought it was 50.
Is it 5, ah, we had 35, so I don't know.
I think it's 50.
I think I think 50.
Does it all local or is there part state to that? We'll check.
I'd rather check to the courthouse.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Or if it's from there on.
I guess, I don't remember us upping that amount, so my, my question, and Caitlin can look in to see if there's a local component, if the other money gets, goes off to the state. We'll check, we'll check that.
Okay, thank you.
Landfill, Bob, are we still 67 per ton? The septicage number is higher and I'll have to get that updated, too. We, a few years ago, the Town of Front Royal, when they upgraded the sewage plant, we upgraded the septic receiving facility. That piece component, that 2.3 million was on us and we're paying for that. It's 0% interest, but we're paying it off over a 20-year period. When the haulers come in and pay, they pay a flat fee to the county to dump their sewage and then they pay a processing fee to the Town of Front Royal for processing the sewage itself. So that flat fee comes to us, we pay debt service, it's about, I can't remember, it's, Andre, if it's close to 120,000 a year.
Absolutely.
Okay. Item number 13030, which is the parks and recs and all of those fees, it's got, see attached comparison sheet or advisory...
Yeah, so every year the board approves the park rec user fee, we get you a copy of those fees. It's a whole, it's, it's a mold, cause every, some shelters are different costs, like you go rent a shelter.
Doesn't it, is that, is that final number in the total number that you're trying to work from or?
We'll guesstimate the revenue and usually we'll look at like the last three to five years and guesstimate the average amount of revenue. Usually that stuff's pretty, it's a pretty consistent, it's not a huge dollar amount, but usually we can guesstimate pretty, pretty well on those. And I, but for example, the, one of the biggest revenue generators is the pool. And it'll generate, you know, close to 90,000 or so, or this, you know, old market, but a year in revenue, but that's been pretty consistent, we know pretty much what we're taking.
Okay, I mean, up until this, I don't know when this is gonna actually stop or what's gonna happen with the golf fees.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that generated, gotta be some reasonable dollars, cause they had 600 memberships or something along...
You know, it was, you're, you're gonna generate 100, 100 and some thousand in revenue, but your expense is gonna be...
Oh, yeah, well, over that, yeah, okay.
It's one to three.
So we would cut, if you were, let's say, we're not operating all four, we cut revenue and cut the expense both. Drop that off.
Okay.
Doug, on cost recovery, where does that audit, like in, in terms of, cause I know that that's what the, they get for the ambulance.
Medical transports, yes.
Transports. Where does that audit come in? I mean, like, is there an amount that they get a year and where, where's that recorded? That's my question.
So we have a revenue line and we have an expense line, a cost recovery budget, so you'll see both numbers coming in, the revenue and the expense.
Where does the money go? Does it go to us? Does that cost recovery money or does it go to the fire department?
It goes to us.
It goes to us.
It comes into here.
And then we pay out of that, we pay fuel for the individual companies, we pay insurance, we pay their meds for the ambulances. It pays for Rick's salary, cause he's the cost recovery manager. It pays for a couple of people.
It requires you to.
It does, there's some equipment costs. It also pays for, what, two or three positions.
And some insurance.
Wow.
Because insurance, yeah.
It's a significant amount of money.
Yeah, it's, it's a fair piece of...
Well, I know it's, it, because, you know, I'm reading that it's Medicaid, Medicare reimbursable, so...
And we go up, it will go up, they'll go up.
Right, well, and it also has special requirements for reporting, right?
Yeah.
Because it's a federal, yeah, that's why I was asking the question, cause I wanted to know where that was recorded. Okay.
Any questions there? And well, like I said, I apologize, we need to get that updated, we'll get that updated to you. Next, revenue projections, and actually, go to the back of this section and look for these sheets. This is the current, skip through the ones that are like the yellow, the first ones. Go to, keep, skip through there.
All right.
Until you get the last two pages there. There you go, there you go.
There you go, okay.
So this is current year and you'll see this, like next week in your packet, you'll see revenue expense. So this is the revenue report. So reading that column, you see budget amount, this top column is real estate. The appropriate is what the board has anticipated to get in and appropriate the revenue. Current amount, that's, that's what had been collected through February 29 by the Treasurer's Office. And that's the same as the year to date. And then over on the right, you'll see balance. So we've collected 15,48,908. The balance is 15,756,023. The percent collected is 50, uncollected is 51.14%. So we're 1.14% off, cause we bill twice a year, right? This is, we haven't estimated real estate yet and this is one of those reasons, we might give another, a few more, give them a few more weeks. They're collecting, it's the link with fees that are, they're collecting. At the end of the fiscal year, we actually will go all the way through the end of August and accrue back to the previous fiscal year, even though it ended June 30. We're modified accrual basis, they'll go back and pull in revenue that was collected in the month of July, in the month of August. And the reality is, you wouldn't make budget if you didn't do that. Part of that is because the June 5 deadline, you've only got basically a month until you get to the end of the fiscal year. This allows us to, for those stragglers that don't pay their taxes on time, it allows you to, to catch, catch up for a couple of months. But it's not unusual, don't get alarmed, it's not unusual for us to be at under 50% collected, cause we're at 48.86% collected. And we still, we're off a little bit, we're, we're pretty darn close. I think we'll catch up to it by the end of the fiscal year.
When do you start realizing some of these dollars then? I mean, I know, I know July, you send out bills and how much you...
So, yeah, so, you know, we, we, for the fiscal year, it starts July 1, you'll bill in October for your first half taxes, which are, or second half taxes, which are due December 5. And then we'll bill, once you adopt the budget, the next week, two weeks after, the Treasurer's sending the bills out at the end of April, beginning of May, and they're trying to collect by June 5, that's one of those things. That's one of those things, like last year, we were delayed on getting the budget out, and that hurts. An extra week or two actually hurts collections, because you don't have much time between there and, the more time you have till the end of August, when you get those bills out, the greater the collection's going to be. But, real estate's one of those things, it's pretty much, you collect half of it, half a year, and half the other half a year. Public service is, public service is, one, it's dominion power. Two, it's the major gas lines and power lines that go through the county. We have, we get a lot of revenue off those power lines and gas lines and utility company stuff. Of course, personal property or your business and individual per cars. For most of us, that's what the biggest number is. Now, you look at personal property, you say, well, Doug, we've collected ten point six million of sixteen point six estimated. There's a balance of only just under six million. Well, a lot of people will go ahead and pay their full amount and not mess with it, especially since we had PPTRA, which was the, you know, the state pays for, pays a part of our personal property tax. So, that, some people will cut the check, especially if they have an older car, it's a two hundred dollar bill, they'll go ahead and pay the whole thing at once, so they don't get the bill again, or they'll pay ahead. But, also, that's, that's one of the more fluctuating categories. If, if a lot of people go in and buy new cars or big, that, that number could jump. Depends on the economy and the market and everything else going on. So, I always like to say, Andre, we, we try to budget conservatively, I don't bet on the come. We're not betting on what we think is going to happen, we bet we know, what we know's going to happen, and that we're going to have, we'll meet our revenue projection. Anything else, guess what? It'll fall to the fund balance at the end of the year, it will come out in better shape. Machinery and tools, that's industry. Companies like Toray and Exalta that have machinery and equipment, that's taxed as machinery and tools. It's not counted as personal property, it's machinery and tools. Mineral rights, I wouldn't even begin to explain that one, Andre, sorry. Penalties and the interest, again, if I don't pay my taxes on time, I get hit with a penalty, and then I start accruing interest, right? So, we get a million dollars a year.
Wow.
Which is two and a half pennies or so, because people don't pay their taxes on time. Local sales and use tax, there is a, a portion of the local sales and use tax as a penny of, you know, you pay five point some cents when you go to the store, right? Go to Walmart. Well, half of it comes to us, and the other half is split between town and county based, based on school age population. So, that number fluctuates. But, if you build more of the houses, if more of the houses are built in town, that, their number will grow. Or if you have more houses in the county, that number will shrink. Our number right now, I want to say, is about sixty-eight percent, sixty-eight cents on that dollar is the county, and maybe thirty-two or so, no, fifty-eight, forty-two, something like that.
What is the other one? It's dependent on children in households?
It's, it's number of school age children, so five to eighteen.
Okay.
And they actually, state calculates it, we get told what they are.
Okay.
Sales tax, Andre, that lags two months.
Two months, so that's really December.
Yeah, so, that.
Even though it's February.
We're, we're, we're looking pretty good, we've collected two point six million, there's two point, just under two point three million left. It's a, it's a two-month lag, we should, we should be doing pretty good now. The economy this last few weeks has taken a dive, but, and December is a bigger month, because people go Christmas shopping, so you, it's not one of those, I don't take the four point nine million estimate, divide by twelve, and I know that's how much I'm getting every month, that's not the case. It fluctuates, it fluctuates around school time, and certainly around the holidays, November, December seem to be up. Utility tax, I know my electric bill, three dollars a month is part of my utility tax. And then corporate, some of the bigger companies that use gas and electric, they pay a higher percentage than the individual does. But, per home, it's about three bucks for an individual. Business license, those aren't due until the twenty-ninth of, of March. That's another one that every day we get past March one, they're able, you'll see the revenue come in a little bit more. There's some recordation, grantee, that's the person buying the property, grantor is the person selling the property. There are different taxes they collect when you record. You'll see those numbers go up, actually, like, right now, when interest rates are down, people are refinancing, you pay, you pay when you go refound and record the deed at the courthouse, then those numbers will come up. Motor vehicle license tax, that's your decal fee on your car.
So, that's really, like, it's eighty percent uncollected?
You, you only do that once a year.
So, that's why, okay.
June fifth should be, I think, pretty sure.
Okay.
You pay that one on June fifth, you don't pay it at thirty dollars, you don't pay it in December. Meals in Bear Bridge, of course, that one's been going up, because every time we add a restaurant. Now, every time you add a restaurant, it doesn't mean it's all new money, you're just, maybe I'm eating over here and not eating over there.
Right.
But, I, I, I would say, a lot of our meals and lodging is, is generated. You go out to Cracker Barrel, it's generated from out of state, out of country. You see Ontario, New York, Pennsylvania plates, so we, ours, a lot of it does come from outside. And the license fees, again, your dog tags.
Now, do we have a problem with collecting those funds? I mean, I, I had a, had a meeting yesterday with, about tourism and out at Holiday Inn. It seems like they're the ones that's generating the most income for us, and, and that's because maybe.
That's lodging.
Okay, well, same difference, I mean, we're going to hit that in a second, but that's the question. How come everybody isn't participating in that instead of just?
So, they do, so the only hotels that we have are the Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn and Marriott.
Marriott, and you have the, the Airbnbs, all the, all the, you know, short-term rentals we do, they pay it.
Right.
And bed and breakfast, and like the Shindo Golf Course, they have a house you can rent out here, they pay on that. So, you have other, other facilities outside the traditional hotel. Town has a lot more hotels than we do, obviously.
Now, we, and we don't get any of that at all.
No. They get it, now, they have to use their three percent for tourism as well, just like we do. They collect a lot more.
They, sixty-seven percent of that number.
They collect a lot more than we do.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. And part of that is frankly, you know, there's, well, you just lost one here with sheets, but there's about eleven mom and, I call them mom and pop motels, the older motels. Most of those are week-to-week and month-to-month rentals, they're not necessarily people coming in, but the town collects, town collects occupancy tax on those as well. But, I'm sure that bullies the numbers. Revenue from use of money, that's interest. The more, the cash, the, the fund balance money, that's sitting in fund balance, that's generating interest. Now, Archie's been around long enough, there were, we had a few years, we were getting million and a half, two million dollars a year, and we were getting four or five percent interest. We're getting probably one point two five or one point one five.
Couple of years, we're getting less than.
Yeah, well, that's kind of one, yeah.
Four thousand.
So, that number has been up, but it's going to be right back down right now, because look where interest rates are. So, there's a, yeah, you can borrow cheaper, but you don't get, don't get the revenue. Revenue for use of property, those are rents. So, whether it's the rent, like at the Human Services Building, we get rent from the Health Department, we get rent from Social Services, we're paying part of those budgets, but we get rent from them. You also get, like, rent from the Chamber of Commerce and the two apartments upstairs, those are rents. Any of the rents that we get, that's where that comes into, Archie, have a question.
How about the paint, the paint store over there, is that?
Yes, yes, sir, that, the, we get about fifty, ballpark, fifty grand a year from Sherman Williams, and that rent goes in the bottom line. That's one of my favorite stories, so Warren County bought this entire complex around nineteen ninety-eight for about one point three million dollars. And one of the things we did was, we kept Sherman, Sherman, it was Sherman Williams, and it was Drug Fair. Drug Fair stayed here, and then we, they wanted to move, they moved to the right, it's on the corner, Ally Henry's Corner there, and then we converted that to the school board space. We kept Sherman Williams with long-term lease. Sherman Williams, we did a calculation, Andre, probably about, within the last year, they alone, they paid back the county about one point two million dollars. They've almost paid enough to purchase the entire complex for us, just to rent off that. We haven't, and we haven't, at some point, we may need that space, but we haven't used it, and the rents helped us out. And that goes in that line right there, revenue from use of property. Charges, correction and detention, where does that come from, Andre? Because we don't have a jail, but I know we've. I can't remember what those fees are from. Charges for sanitation and waste, that's, that's the seventy dollars per, sixty-seven per ton that we're charging down the transfer station on the tip-in floor. So, if I'm a commercial hauler, if I'm a waste disposal company, and I bring up a load of garbage in or trash and debris in, and I get weight going in and weight going out, and they charge me sixty-seven per ton, that goes here, that, that's our revenue.
So, that's a fee, a flat fee they pay per ton. If they're overweight, do we charge them an overweight fee?
Well, you, we charge them per ton, it doesn't matter whatever the weight difference is.
So, we don't take into account what the legal weights are for the road, and if they're over legal?
I don't know if we can, we, if we can charge them for overweight.
They can enforce that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's construction waste too, also.
Just like the, they just tore the.
Sheets down. Well, for the sheet, for the sheets.
Sixty-seven dollars a ton.
They were hauling, having four trucks today, all day long.
They're hauling to the landfills?
Hauling to the transfer station, and we turn around and take it to Battle Creek.
Yeah.
And then we've got to pay to do that, don't we? Have we fallen in the hole on that, or?
No.
Okay.
It generates positive cash.
Okay, I didn't know if we were paying unfortunate, because we take.
Well, importantly, we're sunk costs, because you've got equipment bought, and you've got manpower there, there are normal hours.
Yeah.
The only difference is you're paying the hauling cost and the disposal cost, but what's that combined amount, Bob, would you guesstimate?
Oh.
Fifty-something probably, I don't know.
Yeah, probably, probably fifty-something. And, and it goes, because every year, we have a basic cost of living or CPI increase with hauling costs, our trucking costs to haul at the Battle Creek, plus the tipping fee in Page County goes up four every year.
Now, are they, are they taking the cement? Because I noticed they have, it looked like they put the cement on one side, and then the, the building construction debris on the other.
It's separated, they're taking the concrete, the rock, the, the masonry to a private site at one five two.
Going to Long's Auto Care Clinic, he's going to be expanding.
Okay.
They can use that as clean fill, so that's where I believe that stuff's going.
I was wondering, I was like, that's a lot moved to remove again, so.
We weren't taking it.
Put it in the landfill.
And that stuff tears up the hauling trucks.
Oh, yeah, we discourage it really.
Well, and I was going to say, for some place, I know they got to have an environmental area to put it in, VDOT requires that, so, or whoever's taking the cars. It just, that's good feel for erosion areas versus sticking in the landfill.
Yeah, oh, it.
They just have to make sure they clean it.
Yeah.
Pretty well. Maps, survey, a lot of that's coming from the GIS office, the charge for service. Miscellaneous fee, Andre, anything you can offer there, that one's kind of.
Yeah, miscellaneous, sometimes if we get something, we get appropriated money for one time, instead of creating a whole new line item, have a million line items, we'll appropriate that money to miscellaneous, and then offset the expense to whatever expense is going to.
Can that, can that be, can that be provided, so we know what's in miscellaneous and what's in?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, a one-shot deal, I mean, I don't want four hundred lines, but to be able to see one time, what, what that entails.
Yeah, because any time we do that, there's also an offsetting expense, so if the sheriff's office gets a grant, it'll hit that sheriff's office line item that the expense is offsetting again.
Okay, because this is, this number is eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, you, we can get you the appropriation where that money went.
I appreciate that.
Sale, recyclable material, that's the metals related, right, Bob?
Metals and cardboard, about the only thing we would have paid anymore on anymore.
Non-categorical aid.
That's state money that we get that doesn't apply to, like, the Commonwealth Attorney, Sheriff's.
The line item, okay. Shared expenses, those that, when I mentioned constitutional offices in the state budget, this is money that we get for all the shared, this is money that we get from the state to help operate those local offices. Obviously, like the sheriff's, there's a lot, one point seven million. Register, forty thousand, treasurer, a hundred twenty-one, not as much. So, some of those offices, it's really covering a couple positions, and like the treasurer, it's really her, most of her salary, and probably like one or two other positions, the rest of the local funds.
So, these cover their salaries, right? The matching of some of their salaries?
So, here's a great example, so, they may say a deputy treasurer one gets X amount of dollars, but that number may be twenty-two thousand. Well, in Lee County, southwest Virginia, that may be the whole salary. In Fairfax, probably a fourth of it, yeah, so the localities have to make the difference up.
Got it.
Now, is that number, is that number getting any better, or is it getting worse?
It gets better, well, the number usually goes up, the percentages go down, because usually, if we're giving rate, you know, I'm saying, if we're giving raises, they're not, if they're not always, they're not always as good about being competitive on salaries, because they, I think they, the localities have to make the difference up, or you want them to keep your staff. But, you know, we pay considerably more for deputy sheriff than what the state pays. And that number, that, you know, the percentage that they pay has been shrinking over time.
What is it called, the board of?
Uh, it's Comp Board.
The Comp, all right, and so they give you a certain percentage of each.
Certain amount for each salary.
Up to a, up to a certain number of people, based on what they think that you're, right, okay, your jurisdiction allows.
And they may say, you get one deputy for every fifteen hundred people, but guess what? They've, they don't, they haven't been funding that level. So, we're underfunded, but.
Now, also, they, if we want to appropriate for a individual that works at the sheriff's department, and we want to, we need that person, and they're more than three percent above their, or three thousand dollars above their pay grade, that sheriff has got to come in here and tell us why he wants it.
So, all right, so any new position.
Right.
Other than what's approved in the budget, he has to come to you. As far as a specific salary, the individual constitutional officer, department head can go up to ten percent or four steps. I can approve up to twenty percent. Anything over the twenty percent, and y'all have gotten a few, you had one, you approved a few weeks ago with the.
Commonwealth attorney, right.
Anything over twenty has to come to the board, and that's per first name.
Can that, can that be changed? I mean, I, I'm only asking.
Higher or lower, right, either way, you could change it. It just, obviously, it's, it's, you know, it gives the boards some control that somebody don't come in and just give everybody high salaries, right?
Right.
It's given you that.
Provides the justification, right? They have to give justification for the, for a ten percent increase.
Well, he has to get, even for me, and I've denied it, is that.
That's twenty percent, right.
Up to twenty percent, so eight steps in the scale, whatever. But, yeah, anything, we get two and a half percent for step on our step scale, so, yeah.
If we wanted to control that, we could actually change that method of approval.
Absolutely. Then each one would have to come to you. You could say, anything above the step A, every, like sheriff, everything would have to come.
Well, see, I, I don't like that. It's hard for me to understand ten steps, because they've been, they've been here twenty years, and they've got ten steps because they've done this, and one guy makes more than the other, and then everybody is going, you came in two weeks ago, and you're already making more than me. I don't like that.
That, that's the danger of approving the higher ones, because you end up with the inequities and.
Right. If, I mean, if there's a way for us to control that somewhat, and I know that you do your best, but I'm willing to take the time to do it.
The, 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 having to go to you addresses a lot of that, because they don't want to have to go to the board and try to justify, because whether they can justify it or not, they know that I've got a. And the reality is, it usually doesn't, you'll get more than I do. Usually, there's not many between the ten and twenty, it's, they want, they're trying to fill somebody with that higher salary, but you're right, the problem is, you bring somebody in, you just may have jumped three other people in staff, and it's.
And they notice this.
Well, as a department man, I, I, I'm certainly, that's the first thing I'm concerned about, because I don't want to have three upset current employees, just because they've bought somebody new, and even if you can justify it, sometimes it doesn't sit well with staff.
Okay, I'm taking that time.
Yep.
It's another conversation.
Um, we're down, waste, waste permit decal fee. If you, say, live in Fairfax, but I have a cottage or a lot here in Warren County, and I don't have a Warren County decal, they'll come in, I want to take trash to the. they'll come in, I want to take trash to the compactor side of the landfill every weekend when I come down and stay in my cottage. I buy one time, five dollar waste decal fee, put it on my car and I'm good to go. As you can see, it doesn't, doesn't deliver a, generate a whole lot of revenue, but.
At five dollars, that's a whole lot of them sold.
Well, fifteen hundred would be three hundred of them, so you're getting rid of a few of them. And there's your lodging tax, that's, that's, that's the total of five percent. Of course, you know, three fifths of that is towards some, the rest of it goes into the.
Can we go back up to transferring from other funds, what is, what is that one?
Is that like school construction, Andre?
Transfer from other funds?
Yes.
Yeah, that, well, that's when we move money from one fund, like Shandover Farms is reimbursing us for something that goes, you know, from one fund to, like, we're Fund One, so Shandover Farms, which is another fund, is reimbursing us for something, it goes transferred, that's the revenue line item, transfer from other funds or cost recovery.
That would be like our public works calls on multiple phases, if we have men and equipment up there.
And we also have an expense line item, transfer to other funds, which is, would be the exact opposite for paying.
Now, are those numbers basically balancing themselves out? You get in twenty thousand dollars, are you gonna typically put out twenty thousand dollars or is there, I hate to use, the, the word profit comes to mind, but it may be not the right word.
No, it's just, it's just, just to reimburse, just to move from one fund to another, doesn't necessarily balance out, it's, it's whatever that charge is, you know, being reimbursed for.
So we're, we're not sending money towards the sanitary districts, usually it's them sending money.
For services that are ever by this.
For services.
Okay, alright, alright, I understand.
Started out five hundred and some thousand and went up to two point so much millions and then it looks like it's in a deficit now?
No, no.
You've actually, you've actually collected more than you.
Right, and there could be some other transfers that just haven't went through yet.
Okay, I. As of this date?
Right, right, so we may receive, may receive the money, but the appropriation hasn't happened yet.
Basically, you've, you've brought more money in than you anticipated.
Because technically, that's supposed to balance at the end of the year, your.
So there's minus marks that they don't mean that you're working in.
No, it should, should balance out by the end of the year.
With the appropriation.
With revenue in, it means we've collected more than, well, that's what I thought, and you get over there were many funds, so.
Example, I approved a, I think it was this morning for six thousand dollars in manpower and equipment costs, Shandover Farms during the month of February. So that money will come from the Shandover Farms budget to that line item.
Do we get, do we get a percentage for handling these funding for sanitary districts?
So, you, you get, that's on the collection when they're, like, we bill the homeowner and they pay, we get five percent of what we collect plus three hundred and fifty bucks per district. So five percent basically is what, and it's covering the treasurer and commission revenue at the time to log into the system, bill it, collect it, update the file of all that part of it. Bob's staff, they're billing for staff, straight time, for like Bob and Mike, there's a.
Overhead.
Overhead costs, because we're paying the electric and everything else for lights, paper, that type of stuff.
The administrative costs.
Our costs, yeah, basically our, our costs.
Yes, they're covered.
Yeah, yeah, we charge one on our prior basis for our administrative.
Every, every month, like Bob does a timesheet for Shandover Farms and whether it's straight time or overtime and also your vehicle.
If I'm out there running around, you know, going to meetings or whatever.
So you'll get, you know, each second meeting, you'll get an update from the previous month's revenue, that's how they'll interpret the revenue sheet there. If we go back now to the beginning of this section, just go back to, back where the front one was.
Dominion power, are there's tax rates being reduced now from?
Alright, low, go back to the beginning of that section five.
Right.
Dominion's to a three there. Alright, so, yeah, so the ones in yellow, we, we really have not. Begin that section, sure, there you go.
I was looking at that.
The ones in yellow, we really haven't, we haven't, like, we haven't adjusted real estate yet. We haven't estimated, that's one of the things we're gonna be working on between now and next week. Answer your question, Dominion power. So first column is what we collected actually in FY nineteen, that was June thirty nineteen. Second column is what we've estimated for the current year's budget. Three is the tentative estimate for next year. Now, real estate, we haven't changed that number, we will. Let's, let's face it, if you built a hundred and fifty more homes.
That number's gonna go up.
Number's gonna go up, right? Now, that's assuming that we're gonna meet our mark for this year, so sometimes you have to back it down a little bit. Public service corporation, now we split it, so you can see, public service corporation, those are the gas lines, power lines, utilities. Dominion power plants broke off separately, Dominion number's going up, we had a couple of years where that number came down. We've estimated it up. They've done some, it's, again, we just, you get noticed, that was the, about December of last year, we got a notice from the state, state corporation commission sets those values, we have no control over them. The only difference is the tax rate. Our real estate tax rate drives what we're getting in revenue. The other thing that drives it is our assessment ratio. Right now, and we just got, we're, we're about ninety-five and a half percent assessment ratio, which means if you go sell your house right now, the average home is gonna sell for about four and a half percent more than what the assessed value is. The farther, the lower the assessment ratio, if we get down to ninety percent, that means the home values are averaging about ten percent more than that assessment ratio. That lowers all the public service corporation taxes by ten percent.
Because the assumption is that you're getting in more revenue, so you don't need the help.
That's right, you got it, that's it, that's it. So in two thousand seven, of course, we had a reassessment that was right off the four, five, our assessment ratio was down like fifty-five, sixty percent. That, you can't have that happen with something like Dominion now, that's where you would have to speed up your reassessment. Yeah, reassessment costs us half a million dollars to get through reassessment process, but look, you could lose that amount of money just like that.
How often do we reassess?
Every four years.
Every four years.
So we'll start the next reassessment mid-year twenty-one.
Okay.
We'll be right back at it, again, it takes about a year and a half to get that process completed, we're out to bid out. We get in next year, we're about to bid out the process and do interviews. What we've been doing is regionally, so we've had all the commission revenues, county administrators and probably one board member from every locality all sit in, do the interviews and make a recommendation. We actually hired two farms last time. We use Wingate, Paige used Wingate, I think Rep. Hagg used Wingate, Shenandoah and Clark used Womper. So just the different firms, but we use the same process to get through and get that, but the good news is, so we're estimating about three quarters of a million dollars more in revenue for Dominion, based on what we've seen. Personal property taxes, we've estimated sixteen point nine, we'd estimated sixteen point eight, we collected sixteen point eight last year. So that, good news is, you saw that in the numbers, hopefully that sixteen six is under, we generate a little bit more revenue, that will help us in our current fiscal year, we've, we've underestimated that. There'll be some categories we'll miss and overestimate, but here, I think we've underestimated and hopefully that'll come through, but we bumped that up to sixteen nine and we'll continue to look at it here the next few weeks.
Doug, it looks like it came down in year ending estimated for this year.
Well, that's because we didn't know it was six, we had the FY eighteen number when we estimated sixteen six.
Okay.
So we're, you're, you're really using a year old data when you're making those estimates.
Okay, I understand.
And some of that is, is people paying late, you know?
Right.
And, and what you're collecting, and if people come in and go out and buy a lot of new cars, that helps, that boosts those numbers quite a bit. And that's, personal property is, again, is the one category that you can see significant increase in. Houses are houses, that, those numbers don't change much, they're pretty static. Home values don't, we can't see appreciation of home values because of the reassessment process. You will see appreciation of personal property because I trade, you know, I, I trade my fifteen year old Explorer in for a brand new one. That's gonna generate additional revenue based on that. Mobile homes, obviously, we, we, it's not a very significant revenue number. Machinery tools, machinery tools decrease, it goes on the books, it's seventy percent of value and drops ten percent a year, down to thirty percent and then holds at thirty percent. So those numbers, you, you will see some fluctuation there, if a company like Torrey buys new equipment, it'll jump up, but it starts dropping ten percent a year until they replace depreciation.
Right.
Land redemptions, that's where if somebody has in land use and takes it out of land use and turns it into residential, they have to pay land use redemption for like the last five years maybe, Andre, three or five, something like that. Penalties, interest, those numbers, again, we were estimating. Administrative fees, that, the treasurer, if you don't pay your taxes in addition to penalty interest, I think there's like a twenty-five dollar administrative fee, you pay on top of that. So again, if you don't pay your taxes, you're paying, we collect about.
So that equates to ten thousand people aren't paying their taxes on top?
A lot of people don't pay their taxes, and a lot of them are like, I mean, fifty lots in Shandover Farms or Shandover Shores. Each one of them you're hitting with a fee.
Each one of them's gonna be a twenty-five dollar fee toward it.
There's your sales tax, communications tax, we're, we're bumping, sales tax numbers have been good, Andre, you, you looked at those. Communications tax, that's, so, I tell you what's happening here, and that, why that number's dropping or dropped. We had seen two years ago where that number was coming up, but what's happening is people are dropping their home phone line.
Absolutely.
There, guess what, there was like a three dollar per line, there's a percentage charge on every single one of those, we're losing, that number's dropping. Now, you don't know, you know, are they picking up more cell phone, it's, the trend is, drop. We also used to get tax like Comcast and Struck TV.
Do you still get that?
Yeah, you do.
But they're dropping it.
All that comes in is communicate, it all runs to the state, we used to get that separately. Yeah, we used to have like Adelphia, you get a separate check from Adelphia every month, you don't get that, it comes, all comes to the state. But that number's dropping because people are dropping, they're going with.
Streaming, yeah, streaming services, we are.
Loss of phones, loss, it, it impacts that revenue line. Business license, so years prior to, oh wow. About two thousand and ten, the county used to be one of the few localities in Virginia where the county collected a business license fee in town and so did the town. The town, and we were able to do that back, and I think it was the nineteen seventies, the county used to have a inventory tax and remember, it was, was the joke that car dealerships would move all their cars out in December and bring them all back out the first year so they didn't have to pay their inventory tax. Did that ring a bell, Orange?
Yeah, I remember.
So the compromise was, they went and got specific language for the general assembly, that we could, we could have a business license and they would have a business license, we wouldn't do the inventory tax. The town took that ability around, between two thousand and six and two thousand and ten, took that away from us. That number's been coming back because, guess what happened, we started getting more businesses out of the border and starting, that number's coming up. And that, that also includes contractors and now, here, here's where we lose. Like, if I'm, if I'm shocky and I'm building the new hospital, I have to pay a business license, I have a business license in town because I'm building in town, county doesn't collect any of that. We used to see that revenue, we don't. Again, vehicle license, that's your decal. Waste decals, occupancy taxes, the five percent, wheels taxes, the four percent wheels tax. Tax on recollection wheels, while license transfer fees, et cetera, et cetera. So the next few pages, you can see where, based on the last couple of years, we've looked at, with the exception of the ones in yellow, and tried to guesstimate what the, the revenue is. We're gonna go back and revisit a few of these, but really the driver or on the front page, between Dominion and your personal property taxes, over a million dollars we're estimating up. We're hopeful that we'll be able to move the real estate number up a little bit and give us some additional revenue. If that makes sense. Go to page three.
But you've also got money coming back from the school.
Correct.
Things that are happening positively.
Yes.
Are the building inspections, are they self-sufficient?
No, sir. There have been years where we were, like, two thousand and four, we may have made a quarter million dollars because we, we built four hundred and fifty homes that year. We're doing a hundred and fifty, you know, and I'm, I'm, Andre, I'm trying to ballpark, maybe we take in two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand in fees and costs us four hundred, but there are years when we make more revenue and years when it drops. When we built all the Walmart and Lowe's and all that stuff out there, we generated a whole bunch of revenue more than we had in expenses, or when the home numbers were up, and the home numbers are at a hundred and fifty, no. If we probably got in at two hundred, two twenty-five number, I bet we would.
Is, is the threshold at a hundred and fifty or is it one twenty or is it two hundred and twenty or?
It used to be, probably the ten year average was about one seventy-five, that number is probably closer to the one fifty now, because of the recession, and that, that's the hard part, between two thousand and eight and about two thousand and twelve, we bottomed out fifty-one permits per year and ten, that, those numbers, it's like an anomaly, it really makes it hard to guesstimate. I, I think, I don't see us going really above where we're at right now until, like, the Swan, some of these town properties where you have town water and sewer and apartments and townhomes, some of that starts happening. You're not gonna make it off Shandover Farms and Shandover Shores, there's just not enough lots available.
And are they taking into account person, personnel when they, when they're, when they're working their budgets? Because if we're not doing two hundred homes or a hundred and seventy-five homes and we, we've got an expense there that we don't need.
We, we cut two positions during the recession and the hard part is, even though we're not doing, we're doing the hospital inspections. Or we did the middle school a couple of years ago.
They have one person dedicated to the hospital, right?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, they have one person.
And we did the regional jail, so we've had, even though you haven't had houses, you've had.
But that comes out of, I mean, even though they've got an inspector, every time he makes an inspection, he gets paid. So it's not like that they're.
No, 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 sir, we charge a rate based on the square footage of the job. If I, I could go out there and do a rough, rough in framing inspection, if it fails, we may charge like a twenty-five dollar reinspection fee. You could go out there ten times for the same inspection, you don't get paid a full amount for each time, especially now on the big jobs.
Why can't you get those big projects like that, pay for that inspector? Well, I guess it could be a conflict of interest then, you pay them a little more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it, so you've got here that there, that we do get pilot taxes, and I know that's an issue with, with Valley Health, that there's no pilot.
That's a, that's a federal pilot.
Okay.
That's federal because of, we have federal forest land towards Washington National Forest.
Okay.
And so that's where a lot of that's going.
Alright.
We do have, no Valley Health.
Valley Health should, should be paying a pilot, every hospital.
So they say.
Pilot.
So they say.
Well, Winchester pays pilot to Winchester.
I, I gave it.
But remember, they only can pay the pilot for their enterprise things, not for the general hospital. If they are, they're building like a medical office building and leasing it out to docs, that's subject, I think, to the pilot.
With the Commonwealth.
Part of it, yes, part of it, they also have rehab, so parts of it, no, parts of it, yes. Like up there in Winchester, I think they have the pool, they have some other things that are more enterprise things and not, not truly the hospital, they don't have to pay on the hospital, it's on those other things.
So if they bought Dr. Sebade's office, they would have to pay a pilot.
That's my understanding.
Almost all the doctors' offices.
Well, you have a couple down below that they do, I can't remember the doctors.
I think that the parents' offices now bought that the.
I think Dr. Sebade's office too.
I know at one time it was.
But the hospitals, the expensive piece, like a hundred million.
Would the pilot fees go to town or?
Both, I think, because like you pay real estate to both.
Right.
You pay real estate to both, but it's, that's the tricky part, is the pilot goes, it's for the non.
Non-hospital.
But the more enterprise, the, them being more entrepreneurial, whatever they call it. And Winchester, Winchester has a lot of that, I think.
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
I think we need to revisit that.
I'd be interested to know how much would qualify for.
I'd like to revisit that, okay, so put that in, in the, yeah.
I'd like to. So on page three there, the one, the prior years reserve, that was the, that's fine balance money used. So, on page three there, the one, prior years reserved, that was the, that's fund balance money used. And right now, on the draft budget, we're estimating one point two, that was the school number, nothing else right now. But, so, right now, you look, their subtotal local funds, we're showing an increase of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand eight seventy-two, or one point two nine percent. Now again, we've got a few revenue categories we need to look at, we need to see what the additional state money's going to be. That number will, and the state numbers are below that, but some of these numbers are going to change, but that's what we've got in as of last week of looking at it, and we'll tweak it again between now and next week, and then between next week and when you actually advertise the budget. And again, we're looking at what, what does Jamie collect as far as taxes to drive those numbers. Any questions there on the revenue stuff? Again, you'll have questions later, please come by, we can, we can walk through it. Next section is sanitary district budgets. Thank you, Connie. Connie put all these together in the packet, the cover sheets to really, I just want to highlight. I'm going to highlight the, the increases, especially that one. So you have, we have a couple of different models. Something like Blue Mountain. Blue Mountain has a, their property owners board has a contract with the county. We collect money in every quarter, whatever's collected for those three months, we cut a check, less five percent, three fifty, to them and say, here's your money that we've collected. Based on their budget, they use that to operate. They recommend the tax rate in the budget each year, and that's part of our budget public hearing. Cedarville Heights is the same way, Hainob's the same way. Lakefront Royals differ in that county staff basically meant, is operated by the county. They have an advisory board, which we're working with them, hope, they're hopeful to merge the POA board and the advisory board because they're basically the same group of people. That is managed by the county.
They just ban the advisory board.
Cheryl has been to the meetings, Cheryl's, Mike works with them to come up on the budget recommendation, tax rate recommendation. Linden Heights is managed by Mike and the county. Again, Mike works with their POA board, which is the advisory board, designated as the advisory board, to come up with their budget and their rate. Osprey Lane, we maintain it, Mike works with their board to come up, advisory board to come up with the budget. Riverside, they do everything on their own. They recommend their budget and tax rate, and we remit the money to them. Same with Shangri-La. Difference with Shangri-La is, we take our, we have a, basically a twenty-year loan with them to pay for their new bridge. We take that out of it. Shando Farms, Bob, we maintain, we, we handle the budget. Bob works with the POA board, which accesses the advisory board to come up with the recommended budget and tax rate.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I know this is proposed, it's three fifty. This board has the ability to say, we would rather reduce that to?
No, they, they actually increased that.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, we have to approve it.
When you say.
Yeah, we have the.
The board, this board, we have to approve that increase, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You are, you are the governing body, the sanitary district, you have final say.
And you know why they're asking for that, right? I mean, that's part of.
Their future projections of, of the additional miles they want to pay.
They need to raise million seven over a three-year period of time, and they had to get the number up to actually do that. And they, they have basically approved it, now we've got to approve it for them. Now, I don't know whether we want to do that or not, but if they don't, they're not going to get the roads.
So if we advertise, if we advertise three fifty, you could approve it three fifty, you can approve anything below that?
Right.
Yep.
You just can't go.
Can't go on.
So is there going to be a public hearing for this, and then they'll all be able to come?
Yes.
Yes.
When will that happen?
With our budget, with the second week of April.
Same night, so they'll be able to come and, and talk about the, the folks at Shando Farms.
Or any of the sanitary districts.
Or we have a comment, have public comments.
We can expect a long one.
I was going to say.
And that's the same.
We should start that meeting at five.
No, 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 your approval is the week after. By law, it's a separate night, separate night.
No pressure.
Let's just take two meetings on two separate nights, and, you know, because I can see, I don't mind taking a meeting, but you know, twenty-four hours, I might be a little excessive.
Shando Shores, they do it all, so we, we just do the collection, we pay them the money. Same with Skyland Estates, same with South River, Wildcat, we, we maintain that.
Mike, Mike handles that.
So the increases, Hainob is going from four oh three per unimproved lot to four thirteen, that's a ten dollar increase. And for an improved lot, going from six fifty-one to six sixty-seven, which is a sixteen dollar increase. Lakefront Royal is going from three hundred to three forty-five, but they're getting rid of their fifty dollar HOA fee.
HOA fee, yes, that's correct.
So, rather before, like right now, I write a check to three hundred to the county, and then I write a check for fifty to the HOA. I'll write one check, then three forty-five to the county.
So, in essence, they're getting a five dollar decrease?
Overall, yeah.
Overall, they're, they're netting a five dollar decrease, okay.
Linden Heights is going up twenty-five dollars per lot from three fifty to three seventy-five. I think they're just figuring out.
Aren't they trying to redo that road?
Do some roads.
Now, I don't know if we need to go into that, but I talked to somebody up there and they said they don't want the whole road done, they just want their main road graded.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they set the priorities before.
Well, I mean, I think they want to change that. They don't want asphalt, but they just want it graded and smoothed out and got some of the rocks out of it. But, that's another, that's a topic for another discussion, so.
Well, and you got to make sure it's, is it one person, or is it the board?
I think it's one person. So I've got, I've got some homework that I've got to do up there.
And, and, you know, if you want to, next time they have a meeting with Mike, invite Walton. Be good to do that.
They meet very seldom, but not like a, not like a Lakefront Royal or Shallow Farms, but.
Well, that's, that's a problem too, that, you know, if we go in there and fit some steep section, you tar and chip it, it takes care of, you might have to grade that section road eight times per year, and you can burn through their budget pretty quick if you, you know, that's one of those, they do have some steep sections.
Of the six or eight roads they have, that's off the top of my head, they've really only identified two roads that they want to upgrade and pave.
I think they just really now want to go to just one, but that's neither can do it. I'm sorry. I got, I got off track there.
And then the last one, Shando Farms, and that's the one that'll go from two sixty-five per unimproved to three fifty for unimproved, and then three oh five to three fifty. Of course, as you said, that was the significant.
The most significant is Shando Farms.
Yeah. And they're, Bob, they're allocating that towards capital?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, exactly. And the, the, well, as you know, the, the unimproved lots are equalizing, as many of the other sanitary districts do. Equalizing the unimproved and improved lots, but.
Equalizing in terms of making them equal in.
Equal in, equal in sanitary district.
Whether there's an improved, whether there's a home on it or not.
Exactly.
And some of that stems from, you know, there's, there's, in Shallow Farms, there's river lots, and then there's mountain lots. Well, a lot of the unimproved river lots will generate as much traffic as some of the developed lots up on the mountain.
Because every weekend they'll have a party down there.
Yeah, it'll be, you know, twenty or thirty people, that, that, during the weekend.
When it says unimproved lots, can they bring in travel trailers, their, their campers for the weekend and take them out?
Because that's taxed as personal property, not taxed as a property itself.
Right, but I didn't know if there was, where they do that.
Typically, they have a camping permit due planning, and they'll have a CUP for that.
Okay.
When those properties sold, do we collect the, at auction, do we collect all the back taxes on those properties?
Well, we've sold, you won't, the last sale, Archie, they had, so maybe it was twenty-some properties, they may have four to six, they actually collected all the residue on them and paid the cost of the sale. The rest of them, you kind of lose money on. I mean, when you're selling them for two thousand dollars and there was five thousand owed, the good news is you're getting back on tax rolls, hopefully.
But you don't get caught up in the back tax.
You, treasurer has to wipe that off.
Yeah.
It's gone, you got that one. Because you're giving third title to the next purchaser. But that's why you want to keep pushing to get those sold quicker. You know, I think they're in the process of doing some of that. Any questions on the? The next thing is really, is the, the new packet that Connie gave you, three-hole punch, and I'm just going to, I'm not going to go through all the different budgets. I just, again, wanted to say the changes of this packet versus what's in your binder are health insurance, we save three hundred and some thousand on health insurance, that was a big.
Party on that one.
Yeah. We, we had three hundred and some thousand that we did the refinance last year, also the school bonds, that's helped. I sat down with the sheriff, and we've been able to adjust some money in his budget. One of the things we did, he had a hundred and, a hundred and seventy-four thousand for a new, new stuff in nine-one-one budget. The reality was, a good chunk, oh, about maybe twenty or thirty thousand, it's hopefully going to be a grant. So we took a lot of that cost out, we'll bring that revenue in with the grant along with the expense. But I said, I don't want your budget sitting out a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And the amount we have in there, if we need to do a lease purchase, it'd be enough to do a lease purchase. So we've, we've got it where it needs to be, I think, right now, but. And more, we were able to cut some things. It was the first time we were able to sit down and go through his budget, and you'll see on page seventeen, all his budgets there as a summary, the sheriff, school resource, court services, animal control, nine-one-one. So, his current budget's seven million, two hundred and forty thousand. The admin request is seven million, four seventy-four. So he's, he's got about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in increase there. But it's, that's down quite a bit from where we were last time.
From where you started.
Where we started.
Yeah, he started at like four seventy-four or something along those lines.
Couple of big picture things in, included in this budget. So, we do have the three hundred thousand for phase two of the salary implementation for the county staff. That was the, the compensation study. The school board budget, when we get it, it's going to have, because they've got a lot more state revenue, I think they're going to have phases two and three if they can get it done, that's great news. We do have, and this is on page, hold on. If you go to page forty-six, that's top right corner, go to page forty-six. This is economic development. First of all, when you see enterprise end grants, that's a total number, we probably, almost all of that's going to pay school capital debts. Or we, we, all the industry, like the family dollars and Torays, machinery tools, real estate, we're, we're showing that here, but that, years ago, the boards had set all that new revenue aside for capital, for school capital improvements. We've got about almost ten million dollars a year, part of that's wheels tax, part of this stuff. When you see that, some people have said, oh, y'all are paying out grants, we're not paying out grants. It was the net number, we used to pay out grants, all those businesses used to get enterprise end grants. Almost all gone away, but that's where all that money will eventually get folded over to pay debt at the end of the day. Now, what you see there for economic development, we've gone up in the proposed budget from a hundred and eight thousand to four oh six. That's Jory and Doug Parsons' draft budget. Now, if we fold them up.
Is that to cover the debt service?
No, no, no.
No, that's just the op.
Now, I'll say this, and I've been through it, that number's going to come down, at least what I would recommend, because if we take them under our fold, there are certain things that they won't have to pay for. I think we can cut their legal bill, you know, they, they still would have their EDA board, but I don't, you know, they had ninety-six thousand there for legal costs. I don't think they'll need ninety-six thousand dollars for the board's legal costs. Jason will cover, Doug Parsons, like, well, he'll be a county department if that happens. There's like twelve thousand for mowing at properties. We'll just do the mowing, we won't charge ourselves, probably charge the twelve thousand. I think I can get that four hundred thousand number down to three, closer to three hundred thousand. I've got to sit down with Jory and Doug and work on that a little bit, and that will happen. And I think I can do that without impacting what they're doing. Some of that, again, will be absorbed into county operations in theory. But I just, I just, that's one example that, you know, I think we'll be able to make some headway with it. So some, some revenue categories are going to go up, some expenses will come down, that's one of them. Your comment about the debt service piece, we do not, the debt service for the EDA, all we have in the budget, so there's two, two pieces. And it's, it's a, if you go to page.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one. Go to page fifty-one, there's two numbers. Ninety-two thousand, seven oh one eight, the one oh six, four eighty-nine number goes into that, as does, hold on. Where's Leitron Park right, oh, seventy-one oh five, there's a four ninety-two number down there. Those are, you know, part of the four ninety-two number goes to the EDA debt service, because that's Leitron line they have. We also have a VRA bond that town pays part of, that we pay, that covers for part of that, you know.
The town pays part of it and we pay part of it?
We pay, we pay it and we get reimbursed by the.
By the town, okay, I didn't understand what you were saying.
So, Leitron is an in-town project, we pay sixty-six, they pay thirty-four percent. So we will, we'll make that payment here in March, and I'll send a bill over to the town and ask them for their thirty-four percent. We've, we've got.
Now, are they paying them?
Yes, they're currently. There is, so maybe four hundred thousand total between those two lines that goes towards the EDA debt that they're showing in their budget. And if you look at their budget, it could be anywhere from one six to one two. I don't have that covered in the budget, but that's where those reserve funds, that four point one million, I said that, you know, I think we can cover it for two or three years, we'll be able to make that work. And part of that's going to be, are they able to sell the Stokes farm? Are they able to, they just got rid of the four oh four Fairgrounds Road property. Is they're able to peel the onion back and get rid of some of these properties? That debt service number's going to start shrinking. And my hope is, we now, on July one, that number comes down quite a bit. Certainly, if they can lease or sell ball dry, that helps. At some point, that's going to happen, the question is when. So, I, I feel good that the draft budget you've got before you includes the operating budget, and I think it'll be lower than that. But I think we've, we've gotten that piece in, and we've just got to take care of the debts. I feel comfortable there, what we've got together.
And where are the legal fees? Where are the legal fees in this budget?
So legal fees are not in there, and we, reason, again, we've been covering have been, RSW has helped us a lot in fact. Because we have under, it's two years in a row now, we've underspent on the RSW, we're, we've got about nine hundred thousand dollars this year.
Right, I saw that.
That we're going to be able to move over and take care of that for this year. You.
How do we budget for that? That's what, you know, that was my question, and when I asked you about Sanz Anderson.
We'll have to dive into fund balance if we, if we, worse came to worse.
Right.
I think we'll be okay even next year with RSW budgets, based on preliminary numbers. That's where you hope that recover, we should be getting close to recovery mode and we'll be able to get some.
Recovering something back.
Yes, recovering some.
How are we with fund balancing?
That was the first sheet that I gave you, Archie. That was the.
That was the last year already, yeah.
Yeah. This is, if you will, this is.
I just, you know, I'd like to discuss Sanz Anderson and how to budget for.
Now, these fifty-one and fifty-two, it, it, these are not all things that we have done and are now paying for. These are some wishes as well.
I had color-coded copy for you and gave it last time, I can redo that. The color-coded showed which things were debt service, which were, what are, have to, have to pay for, wants, or we haven't done yet. There were some things on there I haven't done yet. And those were colored.
So that twenty-one million is twenty-one point seven plus million.
Well, about ten million then is probably school debt, almost ten million is school debt service.
But that's not a total that we have to put in this budget to pay, because some of these things have not been started.
Some have not been started, yes, that's correct. It's actually, that, that number is actually not that big, but there's a number there, yes.
So we can still go through and decide which of these things maybe are in a priority?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. But, you know, that's the, you know, like the EDA debt, and the RSW jail, there are certain things on there, all the school capital improvement, those are all debt service.
Okay.
I don't remember getting the, the, I've gotten so many papers lately, when you send color code, I'm like.
Is that this one? Is that the one that's in this book?
No, I can email that to you. That was, it has yellow and red and green. That was, it has yellow and red and green.
It's been right after y'all come on board.
The first, we had the first big binder, it was in the big binder.
Okay, we have a big binder.
Now, can you, do we have a summary of this? Is that the piece that you gave us?
The one sheet, the bottom right number, this is the number Josh always likes. That's, we're seven hundred and twelve thousand short. However...
My heart just...
No, 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 no.
That's assuming that we give them everything that they want.
Absolutely, and, and...
We ain't going to give them everything.
And we've got, and we've got revenue numbers that have to be adjusted. Josh knows, this number is usually several million dollars. Everybody's done a good job of keeping their budgets in line. We haven't, you know, there's numbers to cut, this, this is, we're, we're in pretty good shape. I haven't included any, now, we haven't got the expense of the school side, additional, there's no additional local funds for the schools, but we also haven't factored in additional comp board revenue. It'll get better between now and next Tuesday. I feel comfortable where we're at, and there are things that, you know, obviously we can cut to get down, and we'll recommend that y'all can go through, we can walk through those other ones.
Well, the school's initial budget that was presented to us several weeks ago was a wish list. I mean, there were some things on there that weren't necessary, they just wanted.
Well, and they have to see how much they get in state revenue-wise, and how much...
Right.
Well, I mean, their, their state revenue was supposedly going up, which allowed them to do their adjustment of their taxes all at once.
For instance, your sheriff, the sheriff's total budget's for two hundred thousand dollar increase, and the total for the entire school budget was, what, five fifty, or I can't remember what that number exactly was, but, you know, there's some stuff that we can look at.
That we can, okay, maybe we can push out to twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah.
Or something, if we don't, yeah.
Yeah, you'll, and so, and I'll come in and say, here's where we think all the revenue numbers are, and I'll give you, here's what I think are good things to cut, and y'all go through the cut. I'm going, I'm going to get it...
I've already started my list.
Yep.
There's no, no.
Yep. So, you know, we can...
How much is that golf course going to save us, Archie?
A lot. So we'll, we'll have a list of things to bring, bring it down, and accept them, add some, whatever. Now, we've got three hundred thousand in there for the phase two of the compensation study. We did a phase one group. We have, like, the schools have a, I think, a one percent across-the-board raise, because that includes other people that aren't part of the compensation piece. We don't have that in there now, consider that. I don't know, Andre, do you remember how much one percent cost?
I had to directly look at it.
Okay, we'll look at that, but I'll, we'll lay all that, give all that information.
So, so this, this budget contains the pay study increase that was supposed to be implemented...
Over three years.
Over three years.
Approximately.
So how much is the increase for the...
All right, go to page fifty.
Okay.
And you'll see, it says phase one, but really it's implementation costly, ninety-one thousand, two zero zero eight, page fifty. Department requests three hundred thousand dollars, that's what's included in the budget right now for phase two. It said phase one, we'll, we'll just, that's just changing.
Okay, just change the way.
Aren't they trying to include phase two and phase three, Doug?
That's the rule. This is just what we're counting.
We can't afford it.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's...
Well, I mean, that's, that came from...
Yeah.
An overabundance from the state, right?
That's right, that's right. So, I'd, I'd love to do it, but we can't do that and take care of the EDA operating and do all the other things that we have to do.
But then they're turning right around and saying, we, we still need X amount of dollars to buy buses, to buy this, buy that, and they're getting money.
Also, also remember, some of that salary money they're getting, the state has to be used for salaries, they can't take that and go buy textbooks or anything.
Understood, understood.
That's comp, yeah, that's comp, reimbursements.
That's a large part of the cost in the comp study, is it?
Yeah.
So, the, the phase increase, that three hundred thousand dollar increase this year, is that to get employees that didn't get any of that compensation last year?
So, some of this, you know, let me explain this one. So, schools, what they did last year was, they took people who were like years ten through twenty-five, and gave them their increase. They did nothing for year zero through ten, or after year twenty-five. And so their phases were, we're taking this group first, because that's where we're losing people, we need to keep them, and then we'll go back in the other years and do that. Ours was, we're going to give everybody a little something that is supposed to get something, because we don't know if in years two or three, we're going to be able to afford it. So, not everybody got everything they were hoping. We, we took the people who were the farthest down and gave them the most, and, and I get Jody coming to explain it, but basically, we gave everybody a little bit, they gave only a select group. So they were banking on, we're hopeful, we're going to get the money next year to address one of the other groups, because the downside would have been, maybe they'd have to go two or three years of nothing to be able to catch those other folks up. We just didn't...
So the answer is, everybody's going to get another increase this year?
Not everybody, everybody that was supposed to by the pay classification study. I think Jody could explain that better, but some positions were flat, some positions really didn't call for any real increase, other than adjust them to the, within the step, and others were, you know, there were some firefighters that, at the end of the day, would get like a six or seven thousand dollar increase, maybe they got two or three last year, they'll get another piece of that increase the next time. And Jody would be able to, here's a list of all the employees and what they'll get, just like she did last year, she'll be able to do that. The total for us to implement was about one point one million. I do not, like, you know, the sheriff's office, we got twenty-some new people, I can't tell you today, with all the new employees, how that impacts that, if, because some of them may be coming at a higher salary, some, some would may not owe them because they were born in low, we'll have to wait and see.
Do you evaluate each one of them? Is that how you guys do it? Does Jody say...
Does everybody just get, I mean, it's like you ought to get merit increases, so...
Well, that's, we, that's where, you know, again, it was trying to get everybody where they were supposed to be, based on the salary comparison of this position with the other jurisdictions. We were supposed to be at sixty percent of the median for our neighbors. That was the target, not ninety percent, not forty, sixty percent of the median salary for those employees. So some positions, we still got to, we got to move them up to get to that median. We, right now, have no across-the-board, that's all it suggests, and maybe we look at like a one percent like the schools did. So they're going to do phases two and three in the proposed budget, and they're also going to give everybody a one percent salary increase. That's what their, as far as I understand, what their budget includes. Ours would be, certain people wouldn't get an increase, certain people would get the compensation study, what piece we would be able to afford, unless we were...
How do you know, who's doing, I mean...
Jody, Jody, all we got to do right now is fund the three hundred, Jody, you'll have to approve the specifics, she'll give you a spreadsheet, show every name, what their current salary is, and what their, you'll see that, you can see that.
I think she's already done that once.
She did last year, we had, in October.
But we don't use merit?
Not for the, not for this piece, no.
Do they get merit anyway, though, later in the, in a certain time of year?
Not this year.
Okay.
Not unless we include like a one percent COLA or a one percent merit. We don't have merit, we don't have a raise.
Well, COLA doesn't have anything to do with merit. I mean, you, when you do an evaluation, you use job performance, I, I mean, personally, I just think that's a good incentive, you know you, you do your job well and you put the effort into it, that you're going to get a raise versus, I don't have to worry, I'm going to get a raise anyway.
Well, it's hard to do that.
This is the government.
And, and, it's hard to do that and the compensation study in the same year. I'd love to be able, I'd love to say, everybody who meets or exceeds...
They did at the state level.
Expectations gets a two and a half percent. That would cost us...
How much?
Hundred thirty, forty thousand per percent, what was the number, two-something? It costs you a three...
Does anybody get evaluations? I mean, because...
Yes, everybody.
Everybody got an evaluation.
Everybody gets one.
Didn't mean you were going to get a raise if the money wasn't there, but you got an evaluation.
Everybody gets an evaluation.
And pray, and you pray that that evaluation will get you a raise.
But everybody gets an evaluation on a manual basis here.
Some years...